Good evening. It is 6 o'clock. I am going to call the May 1st meeting for the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Can I get roll called, please?
Yes, Christopher Toth.
Here.
Jamie Crutch.
Here.
Keith Alborn.
Here.
Gary Moss.
Here.
Jeffrey Estes is not here.
Patrice Parsons.
Here.
And David Barrow.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are going to open up the meeting for citizen comments. Do we have anyone signed up for citizen comments? Citizen comments signed up just for the agenda items?
Not at the moment, yes.
Outstanding. All right, so moving on. Items for individual consideration. We will start with 3A, and it seems like we will have some representation on both parties for this issue tonight. This is conduct a public hearing, consider an act on recommendation to the city council for consenting to the approving creation of a municipal utility district, or MUD, to be known as the Bastrop County Municipal Utility District Number 5, located west of State Highway 304 and north of Lower Red Rock Road as attached in Exhibit B, also commonly known as Ironwood Development. Would you like to present?
Yes, sir. Chair, commissioners, we're going to talk about what is commonly, we call it as Ironwood Development. This is going to be located down 304, across from Casino Ranch, Jacobs Landing area, just north of Lower Red Rock Road, as you can see here, highlighted in the blue parcel here. This is kind of a concept from their development plan that they're kind of working through. This is in the early stages. We still have lots of work to go through for the engineering side as it pertains to drainage, infrastructure, roads, those kinds of things. We still have to go through all of that. It's still at the very early stages. So, tonight, we're just talking about the municipal utility district. The utility district is what's going to be the funding mechanism for the infrastructure, the roads, the utilities, water infrastructure, wastewater infrastructure. They do plan to tie in water infrastructure to Aqua Water. It's within Aqua Water CCN. Wastewater will be connected to our wastewater plant that's just up the road, up 304. There will be no, they will not be drilling wells or doing anything like that. They'll be connected to Aqua and to city of Bastrop for wastewater. Any other than that, any questions? We do have a representative to speak specific to the MUD. I don't think he's going to answer much on the development itself. We still have lots of phases to go through for that, but we can bring him up if you have any questions.
I think that would be a good idea for him to offer any sort of information first, and then the commissioners will be able to ask any questions. We do have a lot of citizen comment cards that we would like to present as well.
Mr. Chair, I do have one question. This is outside our ETJ, right?
This is partially in the ETJ, in the 1-mile ETJ, and then it's, the majority of it is outside the ETJ.
Okay, thank you.
But this will be annexed as a part of the, as a part of the development process in a future process, future down the road. It'll be annexed, this parcel will be annexed into the city.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ryan, would you like to?
Let's bring up the representative, please. Thank you. Sir, could you state your name and who you're associated with, please?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Harper, and I'm with Alan Boone Bruce Robinson. And we will be creating the municipal utility district.
Would you like to expand on what you're hoping to achieve with this project?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, we submitted a petition to the city for consent to creation of the municipal utility district, and as Andres stated, the purpose of the district is to construct and finance the water, sewer, drainage, and road facilities, which those facilities will be conveyed to the city. The city council has already approved a development agreement related to this project that includes all the development standards, and as part of that development agreement, the developer has agreed to annex the property into the city's corporate limits at the outset, as opposed to later in the future after the project is completed, in order for the city to start to obtain tax revenues. And then, all of the water facilities will be constructed by the district and owned by Aqua. The wastewater facilities will all be conveyed to the city, along with the drainage and road facilities, except for the detention facilities, which will be owned and maintained by the district.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, do you have any questions regarding the infrastructure or how this will come to be from this gentleman? No?
One quick question here.
Please, sir.
I know that there is a lot of planning and development that needs to be done, but what is the range of the number of homes that this project would incorporate?
Let me see if I have that here. Do you have that? Eighteen fifty? Thirteen fifty?
Thank you.
One thousand three hundred and fifty.
Correct. Three hundred.
Two hundred eighty-nine.
About two eighty-nine, yeah.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Crouch?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, I think in the, in the development agreement, there was an agreement for you guys, when you, after you put in the roads, and after it's completed, to come back and put the final phase of asphalt on-
That's correct.
At the, at the very end, so that we don't capture old and damaged roads.
Right, that's correct. After all the contractors are done and all the heavy equipment, then we'll come back and overlay the, the road.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I had the right development that-
Yes, sir.
Was in that agreement. Okay, thank you.
I do have one question.
Please.
Can you talk a little bit about the parks? Will they be made available to other folks in the community? Are they strictly for this particular subdivision?
Yes, ma'am, that's a good question. So, in, in the development agreement, there's a requirement that we have a minimum of 50 acres of public parkland, so that will all be open to the public. Of course, there will be a private rec center that would be to the neighborhood, but there will be a lot of public open space and trails that are open to everybody in the community.
And so, easy access to the parks we made available to the public?
Correct, yes. They, they won't be gated or anything like that, correct. And that's actually one of, one of the requirements in order for it to be constructed and owned by the district, they have to be public and open to everybody, not behind a gate.
Have you decided what you're going to be doing with these parks? Is it just going to be open space, or is it going to be fun things to do for kids? Or have you decided that yet? Is that part of what you've, I mean-
Yeah, so that's not, not exactly what I do, but I know that there are plans for, for trails and, and park improvements, whether that's pocket parks with playgrounds, but I don't know the exact details of that yet. It's still in the preliminary-
Right.
Design stages, but-
Thank you.
There will be many public parks.
Thank you much. Do you have any questions, sir?
A quick question, is that a single-family dwelling? Are these apartments or homes, or?
A mixture.
A mixture?
So, real quick, let me talk, see if I can get this to work. Okay, so the yellow here is going to be, it's about 15 to 16 acres here, the yellow. That's going to be mixed-use, commercial in the front. This is, these two parts, these two purples here are going to be like apartment-style, could be townhome-style. The remainder, is it more townhomes? This, yeah, townhomes here, and the remainder will all be single-family homes.
The apartments, are they two stories or three?
They haven't really given us that full deal yet, but it could be three stories.
As far as where the homes go, are, what's the size of the lots?
Do you know what your lot sizes are yet?
I don't know that that's- And that, that thirteen fifty number that we talked about earlier, that, that would include, that's the number of LUE, so that includes the townhomes, not, not just-
Townhomes and apartments?
Yes, to the extent that there actually would be apartments, yeah. I don't think we have a set number on that. What was that? Yes.
While our gentlemen are looking up some answers, if the board wants to think about any questions for the city on how this will impact the city or the surrounding areas, that might be a good opportunity.
I've got one. Do I have to ask it now?
Let's let them finish, find answers first. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, so that's the minimum, yeah. So, the, the minimum lot size is 40 feet?
Lot frontage.
The frontage.
So, is that a third of an acre, quarter of an acre?
What is 40 feet?
I believe it'll be a third of an acre. Is there minimums?
So, you're saying the answer is a third of an acre, just to make sure that this is recorded?
I believe so.
That's fine.
I don't think a third is right.
Since we're still pretty early on in this scenario, I don't think that this is of the most importance, but it would be something very curious for us and the surrounding neighbors, for sure.
You're going to see this come back, right?
Yeah, right.
And so, right now, we're only specific to the MUD. So, tonight, we're just, you guys are going to make a recommendation, sorry.
You guys are going to make a recommendation for the consent of the MUD, for the infrastructure portions, and then you guys will see this when it comes back through for the planning portions for plating and all the other stuff. And the plating is where you'll catch the lot sizes and all of the other things that come with it, right? So, this is just like very small front phase of it, and so, in order for them to get the funding, in order for them to go forward, this consent has to happen, so.
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Is there a timeline for all this?
Do you know your timeline?
As soon as, as soon as we get the approvals to move forward. It's been in the works for a long time. Initially, this project was, was planned to be in the ETJ, but after negotiations, discussions with the city, Sylvia had requested that the property be annexed into the city, and so that kind of reset the, the path as far as then renegotiating a, a new agreement for annexation into the city. So, it's been ongoing for years, so I know the developer is interested in kicking this off tomorrow, if they could.
There you go.
Any other questions regarding the infrastructure of the actual MUD?
Where, where will the MUD be located?
Over, over this property, so that the district will be created just over this 289 acres.
No, I mean, like, where the facilities?
So, the, well, the district facility, so the district will construct the water, sewer, and drainage facilities, detention facilities, and the roads, so they'll, they'll be all throughout the-
Okay.
The property, yeah.
Okay.
You're talking about like an office? Is that what you're asking?
No, 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 like, where's the, where's the sewage going?
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, so that'll all tie into the city's plant.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Any final questions before I start reading citizen comments?
We're going to talk to the city, our questions.
You can do it around now, sir.
Okay. I want to know the impact for police and fire. That's a, that's a fairly large-
Yeah, so-
You said 1,300 acres?
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken-
That's almost two square miles.
How many acres, 2.5? Two. How many acres did you all donate?
Uh, two, I believe.
So, during the process, they donated two acres, and we plan to build either a substation for police or a substation for fire, or both. And so, we intend to put a substation out there closer to facilitate for fire and police, and that was part of the, the agreement between the two of us, is they would donate the land, and then we would build the building.
Okay.
So, you have that impact, but the revenue generated from the property tax and that kind of stuff would then help facilitate the additional hirings of police and fire as it goes, this moves forward. Does that answer your question?
Just want to know what the impact was additional, because this whole area, as you know, is growing so fast, and we adequately covered with police and fire.
Yeah, it's, it's, yes, it's, and it's going to be a challenge whether this is moving forward or not. I mean, you look at when, revenue, when they come in, right? Revenue you usually don't see for two or three, two years at the max, sometimes one year, so from the time it's built, that's why we're a little behind, that's why we're, we're trying to catch up, where all this commercial, everything coming in, we're, we're, we're trying to catch up. So, we'll, we'll, yes, we will be behind, but as soon as it gets in, and that's why we're trying to get this infrastructure put in, both for police, fire, and utilities, everything kind of combined. And so, we, we worked really hard, three years, I know, on this DA, this development agreement that passed council, what, two meetings ago? And so, and that DA kind of outlines a lot of this, and that's, you will see some of this come forward with you guys as we move through that process, following the development agreement, because the development agreement lays out the full process for how we're going to move forward and what plans need to be submitted, how it's going to be submitted. And so, this is reason why Sylvia wanted it to be a part of this city, is if it was in the county, it's kind of a free-for-all style, and if it's inside the city, there's regulations that go with it, and we have more review processes, we have a stricter process than it would just being out in the county. So, that's why we are excited that they're coming into the city and, and we get to control it a little bit, so.
Or a lot of it.
Or a lot of it, actually.
All of it.
All of it.
Any other questions? All right, I am going to move forward to reading some citizen comments, and then we have other people who've signed up for this agenda item. If I call your name, these were submitted online, and you would prefer to speak in public, I do invite you to come up forward, and we can do so. Bella Smith, is Bella Smith here? Would you like to speak in public?
Yes, I would.
Outstanding. You'll have three minutes. Could you please say your name and your address?
Yes, Bella Smith, 138 Eland Avenue, I'm right in Casino Ranch. And the commercial piece, I didn't see that on the paperwork, and so that would basically be my backyard. I prefer the cattle. Understand that the town is growing, but there's a lot of concern with traffic on 304. The lights, just to get in and out of there, I mean, it's already rough as it is just to get in and out with all the traffic that's on 304. So, my main concern is that and the drainage. When 304 was redone, my backyard turns into a pool every time it rains. So, I have a lot of concerns about this new development and where that water's going to drain and where it's going to go, and I don't want it in my house. I just know it's going to be in my backyard, because water's already there anyways, but yeah, those are my concerns, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Bella.
Chair, before you continue, you need to open the public hearing.
Thank you very much for the reminder. We're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Thanks, Bella, for helping us open the public hearing. Next one up, this is a trust run by Karen S. Cathy, Halcat Estate, Irrekerville, Irrev- whatever, I can't pronounce that. Sorry for slaughtering that name. Would you state your name?
My name is Karen Cathy.
Thank you.
Our property is 246 Bob's Trail. I grew up on this property. Strange enough, 2003, Aqua Water wanted to buy three acres of our property to do exactly what they're doing now, MUD. They did not want to talk to us, they just wanted to take it, so now, they're 300 feet from my property to suck the water out that we didn't sell them the land from the beginning. So, yes, we're concerned. We have cattle. We still want to do some farming, so if they're draining, the water's already down now. We have wells, we have a tank on there. They're going to suck out all my water and camp it out right outside of where they wanted to buy renovation. They still haven't talked to us to this day, not understanding why. And then, we get a notice saying, now, you're going to put in a MUD right, right outside of my fence and suck the same water that they tried to do 10 years ago. That's my comment. Not so much opposed to this, but at least Aqua Water need to talk to the people that they're going to suck the water from and dispose of water somewhere right there on our property. And I know we, we're moving away from agriculture, but this prop, this land still does food, we still do cattle, we still have wild hogs out there and all of that. And now, we've got someone ready to suck all the water out, which you guys already know, you've lived in Bastrop. Without water, what do you do? You have no cattle, you have no, no farming. So, yes, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, Karen. Next up, Ross and Janet Davidson, are they here tonight? Would you like to speak, sir?
Oh, yeah, I will.
Please come forward, state your name and your address, and you have three minutes, sir.
Ross Davidson, 197 Bob's Trail. Yeah, I'm 100% agreement here. We just moved here. We didn't move here to move into a big neighborhood, we moved to be away from people. So, this is a surprise to us. We were just in California, my wife's brother is dying, which is a completely different thing, but we got this while we were away, and big surprise, big surprise. Had no idea about this. Worried about the water, worried about traffic, and also worried about drainage, because we have, we're right on the corner there, and the backyard floods every year. So, that's going to be even more water that comes in, so, yeah, concerned. That's about it.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your time. We will move forward with the citizen comments. Whenever I state your name, please feel free to come forward. Karen, I have you again. Would you like to speak again? I mean, you have submitted something online and this again. You would have another three minutes if you chose so.
I'm sorry. I did forget something. We're looking at the map, that fence line, that's also, according to their map, they're encroaching on the corner of my property. Again, we have a lot of issues here with just moving onto our property, and even that map shows that they're encroaching on the edges of the property. We've already given ease for that road that's down on 304, so I don't know. This, this just seems like it's a take, 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 and nobody still, to this day, is talking to the, to us, besides you guys today. So, when is anybody going to talk to us as they encroach on our land and then take the water? So, I'm, I'm confused, who's representing us? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Next up, Gary Wade. Is Gary here this evening? Sir, would you like to come up and speak?
Sure.
Please provide your name and your address.
Gary Wade, Gary Wade, 101 Axis Trail, right across the street from the proposed subdivision that you're talking about putting in. And I couldn't hear exactly, they're talking about single-family, multifamily residents, but I never could distinguish how many single-family houses they're going to put up. Then, they talked about multifamily. I heard townhomes and I heard apartments, but never how many units would be available for that area. And one of the biggest things is the road infrastructure. Highway 304 is very busy now. If you go in towards town, towards 71, that traffic light there is terrible, it's only going to get worse as the traffic increases. And from there, just going up down the service roads, you decide 71 is not a nightmare, but it's getting close to it at this point. And the, the main intersections come from Lowe's down towards 304, that's a big choke point, plus with all these other buildings they're doing on the other side of McCoy's over there, the, this is going to get worse. I don't know if the city is planning on increasing roads to reroute traffic or have other traffic available. Then, I saw something on KXN, I actually read it, just talking about five-year projected for Bastrop, population's going to increase 40%. It's the first time I heard anything about that. And then, again, for infrastructure, all these people that move in here, they got to eat. There's only two places for groceries here, HEB and Walmart. Are there any plans for anything else coming in along those lines? And then, the agreement is for the city to incorporate this new area, what about across the street in my subdivision? Are they considering incorporating that, too? That'd be a big concern of mine. That's it, that's all I got.
Thank you very much for your time, sir. Appreciate you coming out. Linda Garcia. Linda, please state your name and your address for us, please.
Good evening, I'm Linda Garcia. I live at 102 Axis Trail in Casino Ranch. One of the things that concerns me specifically about this is 304 and the slope. We are inundated with water headed towards the Colorado River. If you're going to cover that much land with concrete, we are going to flood, and that really concerns me. If you've got to give up 50 acres for parkland, you're going to put these 1,350 homes on 230 acres, not 280 acres. So, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, Linda. Patty Moore.
Well, I wrote out a little bit of a spill, a little different than what other people have done, so thank you very advanced for your attention.
Patty, could you state your name and your address for us, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Patty Moore, 165 Trigg Road, I'm within 300 feet of this proposed property. First, two questions. What are the water implementation plans for Ironwood, MUD Number 5? Two, do these plans progressively promote water conservation? If not, I would like to request that. Because homeowners, as you've heard, are losing their wells, myself included, I already have, from lowering water tables. These wells, as you heard, are being used for agricultural use, and yes, agriculture is important. It puts food on your table, and the supply keeps store prices down. Agriculture already has challenges of operational cost. Are we really going to take away production water? Moreover, local food could also come in pretty handy if we were having an emergency food shortage. Possible? State legislatures think so, because for this very reason, they're writing and passing bills to prevent the sale of farmlands to hostile countries. Furthermore, with the average US homeowner using roughly 35,000 to 50,000 gallons of water per year to water their lawns. So, it's imperative developers make a positive difference in conserving water. Also, development destroys habitats in wildlife, so are studies being made to protect this? If not, I'm asking for a bird study at least, and one that gives suggestions for improving habitat. And by the way, they're not real expensive. In reference to survey needs, the painted bunting is a beautiful migratory songbird that is declining, and I have a picture here for you, okay? The problem is, is habitats are usually removed by developers, especially areas shrubs, low trees, low coverings, tall roadside grass. Across 304, I sadly witnessed them disappear at two road crossings after a subdivision went in. In summary, to bird population threats, I believe it was best put back in 1920, when our US Supreme Court justices, while upholding the Migratory Bird Treaty Act of 1918, declared that the protection of birds was in the national interest. Without such measures, one could foresee a day when no birds would survive for any power to regulate state or federal. Okay, also, just throwing in real quick, I thought of something. I would like to hear how pipelines are going to be dealt with, since there's two running across there. You know, are people going to have access? Ah, you know, how deep are these things? I have seen a lot of crazy things happen, just things you'd never think of. Anyway, in conclusion, I request that studies, surveys, plans, resulting actions be made public and transparent. I believe good conservation measures now will result in a healthier, happier community with higher image. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Patty. Appreciate you. Thank you very much. All right, Nick DeLassio. State your name and your address for us, please, sir.
Samuel Nick DeLassio, 100 Eland Ave. I back up to 304. I'm also the Casino Ranch HOA president. Many of my concerns that I was going to lay out have already been expressed. I'll just reiterate- I'll just reiterate them for, for brevity. Um, obviously, the, the traffic impact is a big concern. 304 is becoming more difficult. My experience so far is the county usually does things on the cheap, and there's no reason to expect otherwise in terms of, um, traffic load metered lights that would have to go in. Uh, even when the South 40 gets out, you can't exit our neighborhood because of the traffic, so traffic. Uh, privacy impact. We just heard that the 1,300, um, LUEs, mixed homes, apartments, could be multi-story. My backyard backs right up to 304, so I'll have no privacy now with everybody and their brother looking in. Uh, the noise has gotten worse. It will only get worse. Uh, the drainage. So we've had an on-again, off-again love affair with Tech Dot who did punch a culvert through 304 after Hurricane Harvey. That was already mentioned that causes flooding. Um, we do have a drainage ditch that was insufficiently installed by Tech Dot. And Linda already expressed with the non-permeable soil that's going to be, uh, basically installed with concrete, there will be flooding. And so the drainage impact will definitely need to be, uh, managed. By and large, we also have a well. We also have concerns about livability and property values as a result of this. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time, sir. Patricia Jacobs. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Patricia Jacobs, and I live at 510 Highway 304. We are the ranch right next to the proposed mud. Um, I have a couple of questions. First of all, um, I would appreciate if you could go into more detail, either from the city or from the developer, in regards to the advantages and disadvantages of you putting in a mud versus, uh, this being incorporated into the city right away. And secondly, I have questions about the ownership of this. I had noted that you put down that the owner is WB Bassdrop Land, but they are wholly owned by a company called Wayne Bridges Group out of Houston, which is one of the biggest build-to-rent uh, groups. And they have five operations in Texas already, one in, um, one in Georgetown and also one in Spring, uh, Dripping Springs, another out north of Houston, and one in Corpus Christi, and additional one outside of Houston. Um, I would like to know if that, if this is going to be a build-to-rent operation or a build-to-own. Will the houses be for sale? Or are they going to be in perpetual use as rental property? And how is that going to affect the tax base? Um, I'd also like to know if they are going to put up the detailed, um, list, uh, the detailed outline of the property lines on this because currently, as they are showing it, they are running seven feet over my fence line into my property and also Karen Cathy's property. And all of that was changed when the, uh, Bob's Trail went in. And so I now have an opening that will completely disappear to my back pasture if they enforce, um, the, uh, mud lines. But I would also like to state that they are actually out of, they are, uh, past statute of limitations. So I would like somebody to talk to me about whether or not, uh, they are going to honor my fence lines, or are they going to do something about the mud lines? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time. Ryan Reynolds. Would you state your name and your address, please, sir?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Ryan Reynolds. I live 156 Eland. Uh, it's right across 304 in Casino Ranch. Uh, so I'm glad a bunch of people went before me because I don't really want to focus on all the impacts that are going to be had in terms of livelihood, quality of life, safety, My takeaway, and I came here, I just wanted to listen first before I formulated any opinion. My takeaway is that there's not enough information. So I, I think it was, uh, Gary, I might have gotten that wrong. Uh, he brought up, you know, you were unable to get answers on how many houses? Isn't that kind of like a, a basic core thing to this development? The first thing that was said, though, was there's a lot to figure out about infrastructure, drainage. Again, those are critical pieces to this, potentially the most important. So, uh, you know, coming into this, my opinion was already, no, I, I can't support this. But my question now is, how could anyone without having this, like, critical information to make a decision on? So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, sir. On that, I do have a question for the city. Actually, as for, for the public, a show of hands. It is required by law for developers or anyone who purchases land that they're going to do anything with to put something out in public. And this was put out in the Elgin Courier. How many people receive the Elgin Courier on 304 in South Bassdrop?
Yes, so it's a state law requirement.
So there was no hands, just, just so the video shows?
It's state law requirement. And so the requirement is, we used to use the Bassdrop Advertiser, um, and that paper no longer exists. So now we use the Elgin Courier, which is the only newspaper in the Bassdrop County. Um, hopefully state law, there's a House bill currently that's, uh, going to hopefully move forward. Uh, but yes, the Elgin Courier is our, um, ordinance-driven, um, required notification. And that's why we sent out the notices personal in the mail. We sent those to 500 feet. The requirement was 200 feet. We sent them to 500 feet, so it even went more than the normal. Um, but yes, you're right. Um, hopefully the state legislature changes it to where we can do online, we can do, there's more than just the required Elgin Courier newspaper.
What about the community newspaper that we all?
Doesn't meet the requirement because it doesn't go, doesn't, it, there's a requirement required, and it didn't meet, and the council voted, this was a change.
Publication numbers, correct?
Correct. There's a change legislatively that requires it to be. So we tried to, so like during the comp plan and all these other ones, we tried to hit all the different ones, all the different, so that everybody kind of got it. But it, it's, it is a challenge, yes, and we're aware. That's why we did the notifications more broad.
I want to be sure I'm correct in this. There are different steps.
Yes.
When you do a development.
Yes.
One is to come in and do this, get permission to do that. Then you have to meet those, then you have to meet the next requirement.
Correct.
Where are we in that step? Is this step one?
You're not even to step one just yet, so.
So as we move along in the approval process.
Yes.
There's going to be more and more information that is developed.
Correct.
That will be presented to the folks here in the audience.
Absolutely.
So they'll know more about the drainage issue.
Absolutely.
They'll know more about the engineering that's done.
Yes.
They'll know more about how many homes. Those kinds of things will be developed as they move along.
Correct.
And they'll have multiple opportunities to show up and talk about their concerns. Am I correct?
Yes, you're absolutely correct. And there will be more notifications they'll receive, there'll be more, um, planning and zoning, uh, meetings, there'll also be council meetings they'll be able to attend. Lots more meetings to occur. Uh, the other thing is, uh, so the mud process, this municipal utility process is a legislative process that's set up by the state of Texas. It's not by the city. Actually, the city of Bassdrop has a requirement that most cities do not have that requires a consent, uh, process to come before you guys and to come before council that most cities do not have. And so that is a very unique. So in a, let's say in another city that didn't have that requirement, this would be already approved and on the ballot and ready to go. Actually, I don't even think this goes to the ballot. This is already approved and done as a mud, and it could be created. So because we have a rule that, that was put in place in 2005 through a process, we have to, they have to come here. Now, if we do not tonight approve a recommendation to council, and let's say it goes to council and council denies it, they have the opportunity to go to the state legislator, and the state legislator can override you and me and anybody else and say this gets created. Uh, that's how, um, some other muds were created. Um, so for example, the colony is created that way. There's Silverleaf. Silverleaf was a state legislated mandated, uh, requirement, uh, mud. And so this is just a, a one-step process that, that they're coming before. But yes, to answer your question in, in a roundabout way, is there are tons more processes to go. We still have engineering, public improvement plans, site plans, plating. There's still a ton of processes to go through, and that's why we don't have everything narrowed in yet because they, they have to get through some of these legislative processes in order for them to be shh, comfortable with the funding they're going to put forward to go through and do the, the plans that they need to make.
So at any point in time, this commission can say, no, we've got a problem with this. We're not going to approve it.
You could, as long as it's within, you stay within the boundaries of the development agreement.
Right, I got it.
Yes.
Andres, so I understand. I apologize because I'm one of the newer commissioners and, um, wasn't around when a lot of this was going on. My understanding is the development's already been approved, correct? This is just a matter of how it's going to be serviced by a mud or some other process?
So no, so this process, so there's a development agreement that's in place with the city that kind of lays out their requirements and our requirements for how we interact with each other going forward from here on forward. How it's going to look, feel, all that stuff. There's a concept of what that's going to look like that's been established by council and by the developer, right? So there's a concept. There are, that is like the 50,000-foot level view. There are still the ground level in the weeds that still we have to go through that, that development agreement lays out those processes and those, um, the process and the approvals needed to accomplish that. Um, and so that's what that development agreement that's been approved, that's what it lays out. And it also lays out the funding between the two of us, what the city's willing to give, what they're willing to give, where we negotiate property for stations and, and those, that's what that development agreement does. That's what we've done. So the next step for them is they have to figure out how to fund this, right? So they either come up with the capital out of their own, if they got some investors and they come out and they, they fully invest it. Or there are legislative allowed, uh, approving mechanisms such as PIDs, uh, Public Improvement Districts. Um, there are muds, Municipal Utility Districts. There are other avenues of funding that they can utilize, and this is one of those funding mechanisms. Um, and so what this does is their acreage, um, that they are establishing this mud for will be taxed at a higher rate that will pay back the debt that they take out for the infrastructure that they are making, right? So that's how the colony was built. That's how, um, uh, West Bassdrop Village, there are mud. That's how those muds, the difference is, those muds did not want to annex until after the debt was paid off. And sometimes that debt could be 30, 40, 50 years. When the debt's paid off, they will then annex into the city. This mud, we negotiated and said, no, we want you to come into the city immediately. So we will do an in-city mud, so they're going to annex after the creation of this mud, they're going to annex into the city, and they will be an in-city mud. So they will receive, when you purchase a house, you will receive taxes for the city, and then you will receive a mud tax that then pays on the debt that they take for the infrastructure, which is the water, the wastewater, the, um, all of the infrastructure that they're using, the build the roads, build all the things.
So to be clear, the issue before us today is not recommending that any development be approved.
Correct.
The issue is just, uh, recommending whether the council should approve or not approve the mud.
Consent agreement.
But the issue as to what will eventually happen with the development, that will be had later.
That still has lots of process to go through that both city staff have to review and you as the commission has to review.
Thank you. Good explanation.
So I, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things with the, the questions and the comments. Uh, so I, I do have a concept plan that's part of the development agreement. It's a little bit fuzzy, uh, but I just got confirmation. So, uh, there's 1,256 lots, uh, which include, could include up to 550 townhomes. Uh, there, there's no apartments currently planned for the project at all, so it does not address apartments, period. And then with respect to, there were some comments about impervious cover and drainage. So we actually agreed in the development agreement to a much higher standard, uh, that we would not have more than 50% impervious cover over the entirety of the project. Uh, so that's some of the beauty of, from the city's perspective and the control perspective, is annexing into the city and then negotiating these terms as part of the development agreement. But again, yes, there were several questions, uh, by several folks about tonight's purpose and the Municipal Utility District. So we have the development agreement, and that has been approved by city council. And then, yes, that all is in the early stages. There are many plans and many submittals to the city after that. But tonight's purpose, with respect to the district, the district is solely constructing the infrastructure and then conveying the infrastructure to the city and financing that infrastructure. And that, that's the purpose of the district.
For sure. Thank you so much. Um, commissioners, I'm going to continue the public comments, and we will ask questions of Andreas and our city staff afterwards.
Absolutely. And then while y'all are doing some of the, the, the next item, I, I don't mind, we'll step aside and I'll answer what I can questions. And then I would love to take some of the questions, and then as we work through the developer, we can meet with these, uh, with the citizens and, and get some of those directed questions answered for them.
Definitely think that's going to be important. There is a good representation of people who are concerned tonight.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and there's a lot to, um, like, we don't have control over Aqua Water, and I, I don't believe neither does the mud. So we don't have any control of Aqua Water. So we, they're going to purchase water and install off-site infrastructure to Aqua Water. And so any of the other stuff, um, we don't have any control over. We can have discussions with Aqua as a partner to them. Um, and then some of the off-site wastewater, uh, we will collect. And then we've had discussions about, um, what do we do with our effluent? Is it, maybe we provide, um, purple pipe, what we call purple pipe back, which is for irrigation and those kind of things to, to help recycle some of the water. There's lots of conversations that still have to happen through the engineering processes, so.
Thank you very much for your time. We're going to continue on with citizen comments. Haley Moore. Would you come up, state your name and your address, please?
Hello, I am Haley Moore from 165 Trig Road, Bassdrop, Texas. I am multi-generational on both sides, from Bassdrop as well as Rose Anki, but Bassdrop County all the same. I am a little concerned just at that go, I mean, you look at the crowd here.
Could you please speak into the mic?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you very much.
I'm not a big fan of talking to the mic, so it's a little bit out of my comfort zone. But anyways, um, you look at the crowd here, there's not that many people of my age group are younger because I don't feel like it was very well told to the community. Actually, I kind of find it funny that I didn't even realize it was known in the Elgin Courier. I read the New York Times more than that. But the, the fact is, growth is, we can't stop growth. That's a fact. But the thing is, though, I think it needs to be told more amongst us at more times that also that people of my generation can get off work and ask time off to do it. Luckily, I had today off. But if we put in Skyrisers like Austin did, or even tall apartments, it's just going to be an eyesore to the community and myself, as well as my friends, who come from this beautiful city, this town. And 304 is one of the few parts of Bassdrop that actually has not been touched as much. You drive down there, it's beautiful. If you go down 969, there's neighborhoods being grown, and we can't change that. But the thing is, though, we can make it better about what is beauty, uh, beautiful to the environment, so forth like that. But I just think it needs to be told more. We need to see what we can do to make it nice and also not encrope on people's property and so forth like that. That's, those are my concerns.
Thank you very much for your time. Joe Emmert. Joe, would you come forward, state your name and your address, please, sir?
Joe Emmert, 167 Trig Road. I own the land between, uh, the river and the subdivisions, Casino Ranch and Jacob's Landing. And I go up as far as the Trigs to the south. And my north boundary is Clear Spring Creek, which has been a major problem since they put all the impervious surfaces in with the subdivisions and with, uh, Home Depot and the other places there. We're having tremendous erosion. I've lost about 20 feet of bank. The city has lost quite a bit and is, have already having problems, uh, with their sewer plant because it's washed away the outlets twice and still having erosion there. And we haven't had a, uh, a really high, uh, water in a while. And my big concern with this acreage is what are you going to do with all the groundwater on the runoff? And right now, it seems like the plan is to send it across 304 to the east side and run it into Clear Spring Creek and the other areas that it's eroded so badly. I have concern about that. I have one other concern that it is, uh, a little early to bring it up, but there not be a lot of private wells going in over there. Since Casino Ranch came in, they put about 60 wells in to water their lawn. Since Casino Ranch came in, they put about 60 wells in to water their lawn. And our well that's been there since 1960 is now sucking up lignite, and we've, I've spent a fortune trying to get clean water. I'll be back further in the process, but I wanted to get those points out there before it gets too far along. There are a lot of things, and probably the thing that's going to affect us the most is going to be the traffic. I, I came back from South Padre today and came up Lower Red Rock. It was about a five-minute wait to get across to Trig Road. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, sir. We're going to call up Scott Bryant. Could you state your name and your address, please, sir?
Sure. Scott Bryant, I live at 103 Fallow Way in Casino Ranch. I don't think, I think this ought to get rescinded back to the city council, because I don't think they necessarily understand the gravity of the size of what they just said they're going to put in. Couple of problems I see, just so y'all know who I am, I'm one of the developers of Riverside Grove. I'm one of the guys that built Riverside Grove, the first neighborhood in Bastrop. My uncle's Bob Bryant, who the park is named after. That, that neighborhood roughly consists of almost 500 homes, okay? And that's a big neighborhood. So what they're trying to develop here is the size of Riverside Grove, Hunter's Crossing, and the new neighborhood across from Hunter's Crossing, I guess, I don't know what the name of it is. They're going to transplant that on 230 acres, guys. I, I, what I, my main concern is this, is about prematurity. The city does not have near the capacity and police officers or enforcement to enforce any kind of safety measures. The county's 75 deputies short that they still need to hire. They can't even service us when we have a problem. Therefore, I appreciate them wanting to put in a two-acre vacant building, because that's all it's going to be, for a police substation and/or a fire department substation. But the reality of the fact is, this monstrous development is very premature for the city of Bastrop. The city of Bastrop's not ready. Let's just be honest about that. We don't have the police, we don't have the EMS, we don't have the fire. If that neighborhood goes up on fire, it's going to go, because we don't have the manpower to put it out, you know? Casino Ranch is going to be opening our wells to spray water hoses to try to put out their fires. So I really think that this planning and zoning ought to kick it back to the city council and say, we need to develop our city a little bit further. We need to grow our own facilities of police and fire, because we are way short in manpower. And it's not just me throwing words at you. I'm good friends with the sheriff, I'm good friends with the city police. They'll tell you, we don't have the manpower. And therefore, they're trying to put this monstrous development, the size of Riverside Grove, Hunter's Crossing, and that new development, I can't think of what it is, but that's the magnitude of this, that's going to go on this small parcel of land that is going to do everything that everybody has come up and said. It's going to drain the water, it's going to do everything bad for the surrounding area. My thought is, send this back to the city council. Tell them they need to rethink some of their thoughts on this whole infrastructure, whatever. I know we're early in the stage, but the problem is, as we pass steps, it gets further and further for us as a community to try to stop it. So that's all I have, I digress with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, sir. We have one more gentleman, he's actually got two different cards, so I'm going to ask if Garland Stillwell would actually like to speak. If he does not, that's okay. Would you like to speak, sir?
Yes.
Please come to the mic, state your name and your address.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Garland Stillwell. I'm the administrative assistant for the Hallcat Estate Irrevocable Trust. That is a property located at 246 Bob's Trail. And for the record, that is parcel 2, excuse me, that is parcel 24820, which is contiguous to Ms. Patty Jacobs' parcel 46305. I apologize for the multiple cards, I ran out of space, but I had three comments, questions. Number one, I worked with Ms. Karen Kathy, and I just wanted to point out that one of the points that Ms. Jacobs and Ms. Kathy were trying to make is that the southern tip of the delineation of the MUD, proposed MUD district, encroaches on the southern entrance to their property. That is not in the Bastrop ETJ, it's not in the municipal district, that is Bastrop County. And that is the gated entrance to both of the aforementioned parcels that I've mentioned before. So the delineation is without any authorization, without approval. No one has sought approval to draw that line that overlaps the entrance. So that is a legal encroachment, and no one has shown us any documents that the MUD district can be legally drawn that way. My second comment was, has there been an aquifer study done based on the size of this development that would affect the region and the contiguous properties? This is highly maintained open space land, all along Bob's Trail, going back almost 40, 50 years, and then some. And so when you put a development of that size, my question was, has there been any type of an aquifer study or an aquifer impact study performed? And my second comment was just to identify the lots or the parcels that both Ms. Jacobs and Ms. Kathy represented. The scale of the concept plan, it's very hard to see, and I wanted to make sure that the record was clear, that there is not an assumption that that delineation of the proposed MUD line is legal even at this point. We do not consider it to be a legal line delineation. That's it.
Thank you very much for your time, sir. Are there any other community comments? Therefore, sir, would you like to?
Sorry for the back and forth.
Thank you, sir.
One, one thing on the proposed district boundaries. So it may be difficult, I don't know what exhibits are being looked at for the proposed boundary lines, but the district is being created over a specific meets and bounds, which that, which that has been sent to the appraisal district, and the appraisal district has provided an ownership certificate stating that the property is owned by WB Land. There's no intent to create the district over anybody else's property. Just wanted to clarify on that.
Thank you very much.
I would just like to say something to him. We don't normally have this many people come, I mean, unless it's something that's very important. So I would really encourage you, or to mention to the developer, that he meet with the neighbors to talk about their specifics concerns.
She would be more than willing to.
Yeah, to see if they can't, some of these concerns can't be addressed.
Absolutely.
In a way that makes them feel positive about what's getting ready to happen, assuming it does happen, and to try to solve some of these issues. I think it would be very helpful.
I agree. Yes, ma'am.
And being a good neighbor.
Yes.
Any other citizen comments?
I just have a question. How are, since none of us get the Elgin Courier?
Ma'am, would you like to come up to the mic and state your name and address for us? It's being recorded, and we're just trying to make sure that we're playing nice. Thank you so much.
I'm Ginger Bryant. I'm at 103 Fallow Way in Casino Ranch. So I guess if none of us get the Elgin Courier, how are we supposed to know from now on all this information? Some of us are a little bit over the 300 feet, not exactly, you know, so we haven't gotten this information if it wasn't for our HOA.
Ginger, thank you so much. Andreas may have some answers to these questions.
Yeah, it's tough to, we have this issue with every project just about. But what we could do is, we'll find somebody, you know, that is a good point of contact for the neighborhood or for the HOA or whoever, that we can be sure we communicate with, and we, when we have a meeting going forward, we'll make sure it goes to them so that everybody's aware of the, of the meetings going forward. We'll, we'll try to do our best. I'll, I'll circle up with them after the meeting.
Thank you so much. We do have a hand up. Ma'am, before I close the citizen comments, would you like to come forward and state your name and address and make a comment?
Joan Losowitz, 119 Eland Avenue in Casino Ranch. And I'm just, rather than him taking one contact, why can't he take interested parties' names and take our names and contact us each? I'd appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your time. Ma'am, would you like to make a comment? Sorry, Andreas. State your name and your address for us, please.
Darlene Delacia, 100 Eland Ave. This might sound silly, but, so if this is just to approve for the MUD, this could be approved for, have a MUD there, and then we can later approve and nothing happens, and so we just have this MUD here? Or what happens if we get past this, and then the next step, like you were mentioning, there's multiple? If it's killed, then what happens to, I mean, is it just dead in the water and we can kill the whole project then?
Yeah. Andreas, would you like to give us our two outcomes? If the MUD is approved, what could possibly happen? And if the MUD is not approved, what could possibly happen?
Yeah, so again, okay, so from you guys, if you guys do not, do not recommend a consent to the council, it goes to council next, then the council will be the May 27th meeting? So the May 27th meeting, you guys are going to make a recommendation to them, yea or nay. On May 27th, the council will hear the same, same thing. And so there's an opportunity for everybody to come to that meeting on May 27th. The council will have to either give consent or no consent. If council decides to give consent, then they'll go forward, and then they'll start through their funding mechanisms, meeting with however they go forward from there. And then the process starts, and we go through the development phases. I'm assuming, Ryan, maybe you can help me out, but if, if at some point this project doesn't make, then they don't take the debt, and then this MUD would dissolve, I would assume. But there is, again, if the council doesn't consent, there is opportunities for them to go around council and go to the state legislator and have this approved without our approval. That, yes, that is outside of our scope and outside of our, our wheelhouse, so.
So from the funding perspective, the, the district itself does not fund the infrastructure. The developer funds the infrastructure. The district wouldn't issue bonds until later to reimburse the developer for that infrastructure, assuming the developer performs and puts the infrastructure, the houses on the ground to then create the taxable value for the issuance of that debt. But the, the agreement with, with, the council has approved, the development agreement does provide, if the city does not consent to the creation of the district, because the, the way this, the, the code is set up, we have to go through this process with PNZ and then back to council again, that if the city does not approve the consent to the creation of the district, then the developer could terminate the development agreement and utility agreement with the city, in which case then the development could still proceed outside the city in the ETJ, which would not have near as many restrictions, regulations, because it'd be subject to county, Bastrop County requirements.
Hey Pete, hold on, sorry. Sorry, Commissioner Parsons, I appreciate your patience. This is going to be the final call for citizen comments, and I will close the citizen comments so that the board can get opened up and ask their own questions. Is there any other person who wants to speak publicly? Would you like to come up, sir, so that it's recorded? Thank you very much. And we are going to make this brief, so that we can move on to the board's questions.
Two seconds or less.
Thank you, sir.
Earlier comment referenced a certificate of ownership. I'd like to propose a recommendation that that be made available to those citizens that have a boundary line issue, because we don't have access to it.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am? I believe it's Haley.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Haley.
Haley Moore. I just wanted to say, too, the fact if we are going to have future meetings over this and so forth like that, could we maybe have, like, mailed like that one? I mean, I think it should extend farther than 300 feet, because it affects more than just 300 feet. I mean, honestly, I did not realize the place was going to be turned into this project until I got that letter, because honestly, the for sale sign disappeared on those two big posts, and I saw cattle. I figured it was going to ranchland. So I mean, either mail or heck, even put a sign on those two posts, just something more available to us to see that aren't a part of the Elgin Courier.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to close citizen comments and move forward with the meeting. Thank you so much. Commissioners, you want to go first?
All right. So in my line of work, we get inspections done of houses, and I tell my clients, there's three things that are important on an inspection. Number one, it's cosmetic. Number two, it's something that needs to be fixed. And number three, it's dangerous, and it has to be corrected. The flooding of Casino Ranch, when it happened, was devastating. A lot of people don't know that, but it was. And then they tried to fix it. I think of the rain they're having in Oklahoma right now. If that happens again, I know Casino will flood again. Now, we're going to talk about putting that many homes in such a small area with a road that is very dangerous. All of those cars, all of those people going on that road to get into that one area, it's dangerous. So I started my whole thing out with that, if it's dangerous, it has to be looked at. So the current flooding issues on 304, and then the road being too small right now, I believe, right now, because of the lack of infrastructure, we need to stop the process now and not approve what we're talking about, so that it can go back to the drawing board. And I, I'm not looking for that. I'm just doing what I believe is right. And if I lived on 304, and I thought that I'm fixing, if I bought in Casino Ranch years ago, and now suddenly they're going to put commercial behind my house at 304, I would be very upset. And I don't blame you folks for being upset about it. So I am voting no on this, hands down. So I don't care what anybody else says. I'm out of my mind.
Yeah. I just want to be clear that I understand this. If we vote no today, they can still go to the state and get approval.
Correct.
Okay, so if, if we keep it within our control.
Correct.
We have more control over how this thing moves forward.
Absolutely.
So it's.
And so to address, so there could be, there's, there's requirements in development agreement for traffic impact analysis to be done.
Right.
Which then would trigger improvements.
Right.
That text dot would be required, whatever improvements may be required, and then, you know, as you're looking at 969, at certain phases of those developments.
Right.
Certain improvements are made to the roads, right turn lanes, extensions, widening, and same would happen here, and the developer would be responsible for those improvements. Same with drainage. Any of the drainage would be, they would be responsible for their portion of the drainage on their lot. And so again, if, yes, if you don't control it, yes. And if they remove themselves from the city, which we have more stringent.
Control.
Control.
Yeah.
Than the county does. If they remove themselves from the city and, and they decide to not annex and to not go through our processes, there would be less control, less drainage, less of everything.
Right.
Than what they're being required to by the city.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner?
I, I have a major concern about the issue that was raised by the administrative assistant for the trust when he spoke about encroachment. Perhaps that's just a misunderstanding, perhaps it's just a mistaken way that map was drawn, but I would feel very uncomfortable approving the MUD until we were absolutely sure that there was no legal encroachment going on. Otherwise, we're putting a burden on the trust to eventually bring a lawsuit and have to spend a lot of money trying to claim their land rights. Like I said, could be just the way the map's drawn, this might be some, we can very easily clear up, but we absolutely have to have that cleared up before we.
Yeah, and then Ryan can address, it just, it depends on what map, you know, if we're talking about the survey map that's provided, or it just, there's lots of different maps floating around, so we'll just have to make sure which map.
So the, the petition for consent, as I said earlier, has a meets and bounds description of the property that is being included in the district. There's also included in that petition a survey that shows the boundaries of that property, which is the exact meets and bounds acreage of the property that WB Land purchased. And then that was further verified. We send the survey and the meets and bounds to the appraisal district, and the appraisal district comes back and identifies any owners of property within that meets and bounds description.
Would you be willing to sit down, and we may have to table this, to do this, but would you be willing to sit down with the individuals from the trust or any other would you be willing to sit down with the individuals from the trust or any other concerned landowner about resolving encroachment issues? A potential encroachment?
Absolutely. Yeah, there's no intent to create the district over anybody else's property. And in fact, when we submit that to the TCQ, we have to identify all of the owners that are included within that property and those owners sign the petition requesting that the district be created over the property. So absolutely, we can clear all of that up.
Commissioner Moss, do you have a question?
No, I have no questions whatsoever. Just got to make some statements. We are here for a particular reason. Getting off on everything else in the world is not very useful at this time. We're here to talk about the mud district. I can appreciate all your people out there that have all your concerns about this situation. This is a process. And you can look on what y'all are doing as premature rappelation because of the fact that none of this is set in stone. And you have to understand what the P and Z really does. We're political cover for the city council is what we do. You can akin us to being like a conductor on a train. You can't say who gets on the train, who gets off the train. You can't say who, where it goes, let it jump to tracks, see who catches hack. That'd be us. Have to have somebody political cover, that's us. So in this situation, all we're here to deal with is the mud district. I can appreciate you guys don't want this in your backyard, but the problem you're going to have, and I suggest to you to keep up showing up for these meetings, but you need to come when you can do something about it. And everybody that lives across the street, you're not citizens of Bastrop. That creates a problem, you know, for us to understand where y'alls, you have any say in this matter whatsoever. It's going to be annexed into the land. So you have to understand, we're required by the state to pretty much say, fine, do a mud district. It's a process of starting what they need to do to put everything else together to answer your questions. You're asking questions that do not, the answers don't exist at this time. You have to go through this process to do. To shut it off now is not going to happen by any stretch of the man. Nation where everybody up there votes no, the state will let them do it. So do you want us to control it? Do you want the state to control it? So that's what you really got to think about. And I appreciate your positions, but that's the facts, the way they are. And so to say no to it today is not going to do the dang thing. And for them to start answering questions on things that they don't have any developments on now is ridiculous. Wasting time, you're wasting money. Let them get their mud, move forward, and they'll be meeting after meeting after meeting. And if you'll pay attention to the city of Bastrop, you're talking about being notified. You can, now that you know this exists, you can go to the city and you'll see what's coming up in front of the P and Z and the city council. That's when you need to come to do this. But it's, you're whistling in the wind, sorry. I'm just trying to be honest with you in this situation. They're going to do this part with or without us and might as well move forward.
Yeah, I agree 100% with what you just said. And Casino Ranch, I don't think it's in the city limits, correct? So it wasn't, and so that's, that's really the the plus part of this whole thing is that there is a development agreement that's already in place and it would make the development be built under city standards. And so that's the beauty of the whole thing and and all the things that you're, not really that you're complaining about, the water, the sewer, the drainage, the fire, the police, all those things are addressed in the development agreement. And is the development agreement open to the public? Is that a public document that you can go in?
It has not been fully executed. Once it is fully executed by both parties, it will, it could be available to the public, yes.
So I think that would answer a whole lot of the questions that you have here tonight. But the only thing the city is trying to do is get it where it can be annexed into the city at a future date, correct?
Yes, and let me clarify, so the council meeting, what date was the DA?
Two weeks ago, I think.
Two weeks. There is a draft copy in the council agenda packet. So that that draft copy is public and that was the one that, but I believe there was changes made to that with the impervious cover requirements. There was another requirement that was added during council that is in the, well, final executed copy, sorry.
So I would encourage everybody to read that document when it becomes available because then you'll find out what what's going to be the bits and pieces of this entire development. It's very preliminary right now, so there's, there's, nobody can answer all the questions that that you have as far as what are you going to do at the park? What are you going to do with the drainage? It's all very preliminary. The thing that's not preliminary, and you can't build on other people's land. So I know you guys have a concern that you're encroaching seven feet on my property or whatever the distance is. You can't legally build on somebody else's land. So it's by meets and bounds, like you said, you may not have that document. I don't think we've, I don't think it's the same document that you were talking about that showed, you showed earlier, that shows it encroaching on something, but you can't encroach on other people's property. And the mud can't be developed on somebody else's property. It has to be within your own, your own property. So for the, what the council, I mean, what the commission has to look at tonight is just an approval of potentially having a mud.
Just a recommendation to council. And your recommendation, Commissioner, could be to make sure that the, all the meets and bounds are met before council. It goes to council on the 27th.
That would take care of that problem where there, you can't capture somebody else's land.
Thank you very.
The drainage, I think the drainage and the traffic study is part of the development agreement, just from the meeting that I saw when I were first drafting it. So I think all those things are addressed and will, will be addressed in the 27th meeting. And so I encourage everybody to watch that meeting and look at that, look at that document and it'll answer a lot of your questions. And if, and if you don't approve it here, it can go and get developed anyway. And it, and the beauty of it is that it'll at least be done under city standards and not just like the Wild West and which is building in the county. It's the Wild West. And if you can at least have some regulation and have the city standards to be enforced and in an annexed subdivision, at least you can have that to fall back on.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
I just want to say one other thing to everybody, and that is that this commission has proven that we take traffic and water very seriously. We talk about it a lot when we talk about other subdivisions and other developments going in. That is something that we consistently consider. So I think that that's something you can count on from us. When they get to that point, we can say, look, this isn't working, so go back to the drawing board or figure out some solution to this. I think that when we get to that stage, we will do our best to take care of you and to be sure that we're not putting you in either, I mean, I can tell you traffic in this city is going to grow, period. I'm not really sure what we do about that when we're talking about the kind of growth we're looking at, but we're going to do our best. I mean, there are things we can't do when we're talking about text dot, but when we're talking about the city, the city's very on top of that. So that's one thing I want to say. Also, the city is willing to take names of everybody who's here tonight and let them know of any time we're going to be talking about this project, correct?
Yes, we can take, yeah, take any names or if they give us a specific point of contact beyond who's here tonight that we can communicate with, we'll take that as well. And staff will send that up.
Maybe that'll help some of you folks feel more comfortable about the fact you'll have an opportunity to continue to come back and listen to discussions we have about this particular development and you can raise any issues then. And it looks like the developer's also willing to have a conversation with you. So I appreciate you guys coming. I mean, it's, it's important that we get your input.
Commissioner Moss?
I want to have a couple of things. One being is this is in the city. Impervious cover falls into play here. That makes a huge difference on the runoff and things like that. And engineering wise on that property, you have a better chance of this thing being in the city to reduce flooding in y'all's neighborhood across the street because there would be retention ponds would be required, there'd be big studies on that and it will absolutely, if you've got it in the county, they don't have to do any of that. It can, the impervious cover will be higher and they don't have to, I don't think they have, retention ponds is a big requirement in the county, is it?
Some.
But not much, not like we do.
Yeah.
We have very strict.
There's much higher standards.
Much higher.
Yeah, standards, you know, in the city type thing. And so if it goes to county, you have more chance of being flooded over there, I guarantee you. And we've, we've been redoing our code here in town to reduce the density, you know, and we've made great strides in the ability to have one acre on a, on single family houses on like P3 and P2s, a third of an acre, you know, type thing. So that's what you're, you're dealing with in this situation. So it's, it's very much something that you really want this to happen because it's going to happen one way or the other.
Did we ever approve a plat for this or was I?
We're not even to that, we're not even there yet.
Never.
We're way away from that. Do you still have, that will still come before you as well.
This is the, this is the very first time this has come in front of us.
Correct.
About anything.
Anything to do with this.
But he said he's seen it, he's heard about it.
This was at council meeting, a couple of council meetings ago was the, the development agreement between the two parties. And those are all concepts. Those are not, those are not like, there's some processes that are set in stone and some like impervious cover requirements that are in there that we negotiated in there. There's some things in there that are in there that we will have to work through as we go forward.
And I think it was asked, if we, if we approve the mud, but it doesn't move forward, nothing happens. There won't be any pipes laid, there won't be roads done, nothing. The land will just stay exactly the way it is.
No, not necessarily. I mean, if the developer chooses to.
Yeah, so if the district is created, but the development does not move forward, then correct, it's just basically on paper it exists, but there's no, there's no pipes, no roads, no.
Turn it down.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
If they turn the mud down, would you still?
No, 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 no.
I don't think that's what he was asking.
No, I'm saying if we approve the mud, but then the development stops.
Right, then there, then there would be no infrastructure that goes in, correct.
Yeah, they're not going to risk their money.
Guys, y'all understand what's happening right now? Is anybody confused? I want to make sure if anybody's confused that, because I understand what they're saying, you know? I understand what they're saying. I don't like it, but I don't know, honestly.
We've closed the citizen comments, sir, but please move forward and we'll allow it. Please, sir. Please state your name and your address. And is this a question towards the mud? Thank you, sir.
Scott Bryant, 103 Fallaway again. No one has really explained the benefit of the mud. What's the benefit of having a mud? You know, I mean, we're a non-citizen according to this guy because we don't live in the city, however, be careful when you say that because some of us have businesses in the city and we do pay city taxes. So that's offensive. Secondly, what is the benefit of a mud, guys? What is the benefit of having this mud other than allowing a big superstructure neighborhood to come in? No one, no one's explained the benefit of a mud. I just, huh? Right, so I guess I am confused.
Andres, would you be able to offer an answer, please, sir?
So the benefit of the district is to finance the infrastructure over a period of time. So all of these costs, I mean, we all hear of the problem, the $100 million first lot problem. Well, that's exactly what you have. I mean, all of this infrastructure that goes in costs a lot of money. That can either be passed off in the lot cost to the home builder and then from the home builder to the buyer. And so you have a home priced at X or you can have a utility district that can finance that infrastructure over time and that is not passed off to the home builder. And so you have the same house significantly less expensive and more affordable to everyone.
Are there any final questions? Okay, so to the public, thank you very much for being here. This is a prime example of you guys showing up and actually voicing your concerns, your opinions, et cetera. You have to continue to do it. The city council's emails and phone numbers are online. I actually think that some of ours are online as well.
Shh, don't tell that.
Please contact Commissioner Moss.
Very much.
Because I might not be as eloquent of him, but I will have an opinion on this. We actually need your input. We're here to represent you all. And so if you are part of the city, if this is annexed, that's when we get to really help you guys out and be a voice for you all. So please reach out, state your concerns to the city council, state your concerns to the city, state your wants and desires. How can this happen? How can it not happen? And that's going to be super beneficial. And with that, I'm going to open it up for any motions.
Make a motion to approve the mud, it's written.
My second.
Want to take a vote?
Wait, wait.
Yes.
I'm going to take my second, I'm going to take my second back because I think we want to add that we meet meets and bounds on the.
Thanks for the clarification.
But how's that part of this? The mud, it's not part of the mud.
Can be.
Can be?
You can make an amendment to your motion. Commissioner Moss, do you accept this amendment?
Sure.
Yeah. Gary, would you accept it with a caveat to it or not?
Means absolutely nothing, I'll accept that.
Okay. Then I would second mine.
All right.
Okay, Christopher Toth.
Based on Commissioner Crouch's motion, I say yes.
Jimmy Crouch.
Yes.
Keith Auburn.
Yes.
Gary Moss.
Yes.
Jeffrey Estes.
No.
Patrice Parsons.
Yes.
David Burrow.
Mine would be yes with a strong emphasis that the city council takes into effect everything that has been said tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to 3B. Again, thank you very much for being here, public. We hope to see you again. We're going to take a three-minute break and then we will come back for 3B. It has been Commissioner Moss's request for three, thank you very much, sir, for Commissioner Moss. It's been over three minutes. So we're going to continue with item 3B. Conduct a public hearing, consider an act to approve an amendment to the comprehensive plans, Chapter 2 and Chapter 5, as it relates to the growth potential map, community growth text revisions, land use categories, and the future land use map.
Good evening, commission members.
Thank you.
Public. This is part of our ongoing journey, been going on approximately nine months. Again, I want to clarify that the map documentation you're looking at tonight has been a process through public meetings, open forums, questionnaires to get what we're looking at today. Tonight's kind of your first official meeting to recommend, make recommendations to P and Z, I mean, the city council. Our last meeting was April 24th, which was open house from 4:00 to 6:00. And a joint city council and P and Z, where we got a lot of input and hopefully we addressed those comments and input. But one thing that came out of that meeting I kind of wanted to touch on is how important this document is because I think that was kind of lost and again, for education of the public and us all getting on the same page. We're in what, there's a familiar, it's been around since the 70s, deal called the Texas Triangle. And I mean, you are familiar with it, it's 35, it's 10, 45 makes that triangle from Dallas, Fort Worth, San Antonio, Houston. If you look at that, you know where Bastrop is in dead center of that. So for a view that's been around for a while, you've seen how much growth has taken place over the years. Our last comp plan was 2016, so you know, last seven, eight years, not a whole lot happened, but what you're seeing now taking place in Bastrop is going to be an ongoing deal. Austin is expanding. As a citizen spoke last week, we had a meeting in Austin. The Austin airport's going to be adding terminals, you know, one, two per year. You know, it would never be a DFW airport, but it's going to be a substantial hub center of Texas. So again, very important, this again, I want to stress how important this document is. This is the foundation for the future, future growth. So again, this is a Texas triangle and again, where we fall, and I didn't really realize, if you want to go from Austin to Houston, you go through us, how many large communities are around us. We're not really a suburb of Austin, we're really a hub of all these cities with different distances. Again, this is just a rough, I kind of use what I call my three Ps. As you look at what we've done, one is protect and preserve. We're very understanding, we hear the authentic Bastrop, and you go back and look at your map. Our first goal was really to protect authentic Bastrop and specifically the residential areas. And that's part of our B. areas. And that's part of our B three code amendments that we've done in the past too that ties to this land use plan of the lot sizes, the parking requirements, again, to try to protect the residential and historical nature of Bastrop. And then you look at development, you have developed land. Bastrop's blessed to have a lot of areas that's already developed. That's a good area. You're not going to redevelop those areas. So what you do have, you have left is undeveloped property. And that's where the key where this plan is going to be used is when somebody comes in and wants to develop a piece of property, they're going to look at that future land use plan. That's going to be part of our determination on what's the best use for it. The other one is plan. Again, this map is again, a very important map that we all departments use. We're not over here in a silo with development services. The school district, we use it. We're across the hall from EDC. When EDC meets with developers and stuff, they're going to use this map. It's, we're going to use it in planning, infrastructure, water, sewer, electrical, education for public, private, college, technical, et cetera, recreation, parks, trails, et cetera. And you know, we're all working on that together. But again, this is kind of the guiding document for what we're working on. And again, the question is, part of this is provide is people want more grocery stores. They want more restaurants. They want different restaurants. So again, through this plan, it's providing hospital medicals, one of the big needs of grocery, recreation, parks and trails, restaurants, entertainment, again, et cetera. And that's just a rough overview. And, and again, I want for sure to understand, this is a future land use map. It's not changing any current, so we have our B three code. We don't really have zoning district. We have place types. This isn't changing what's there right now. It's when some new development comes in or redevelopment that wants to deviate from this to a different category, that plan is used as a tool to come up with that zoning category. So this is not for the commission, for the public to understand the purpose of this document, what went into it. It's not changing existing uses, but how important it is for based on the growth we're going to experience specifically where we're at. So Ilda with half, who's been part of our nine-month journey is going to kind of go over an overview of the highlights from our last meeting. And I'll give any questions to the commission. Thank you all.
Could you just state your name and who you're associated with, please?
Absolutely. Good evening. Thank you. Ilda Capricioso with Half Associates. Yes. Thank you. We've been working with, with you and the city council and your residents here to begin to update the sections of the comprehensive plan that were adopted in 2016 related to growth and related to the future land use map. And so I'm going to reiterate some of the things that Mr. Cowie mentioned to you, which is of course that Texas triangle. And I think what's also really interesting is that, you know, sort of the distance you are from many of these places, you're not very far. So lots of people are, are able to visit the area as well as not just pass through the area when they are traveling. They really do see Bastrop as a hub for many of the, the, the region here in this county. So one of the things that I wanted to also touch on, which echoes a little bit of what Mr. Cowie said, is that comprehensive plans are important. They provide a lot of information for the community to think about their future growth and how that influences infrastructure, how that influences the type of development that may want to come here, the quality of life, as well as various services that the city would provide in terms of police and fire. And so comprehensive plans really provide this very high level future vision for the community. So they do, do, they do make the effort to really acknowledge how we're protecting and preserving. And in this update, we certainly look at that idea of Bastrop's residential character, as well as how we're planning for that future growth and that intention. And then of course, providing areas where there are opportunities for that new development to come here to Bastrop or as it is coming here to Bastrop. So one other thing I wanted to just highlight is that the relationship between the future land use map or the future land use plan and your zoning, your place types. And essentially, you can think of one as, as sort of a guideline, which is the future land use map. And then your zoning and your place types are really those that provide much more of those regulations, those very detailed or enforceable by your local codes, where your land use map is really a guidance document for you, for the staff, for the city to be able to say, okay, as we invest in our community, here is where we're going to invest in certain infrastructure because we're permitting or allowing a certain type of growth. These two particular concepts align when it comes to how you regulate, you know, as you're doing your approvals for various zoning or new developments, you'll reference the future land use map and you'll reference your comp plan to see if there is alignment. And then of course, it just helps to also fulfill that long and short-term vision that your community residents have expressed that they want to see for that future growth. And then of course, as you adjust any zoning, also how that relates to the future land use map, you'll, you'll use the future land use map to help guide any of those future changes. So we met last week at your workshop and sort of went through many of these slides. I'll go over just these very quickly. Purpose of the update, really, we're trying to reflect the changes that we've seen since the 2016 adoption, realign the future land use map to some of the identity and the vision and the community character that the city and the residents have had or have. Really talk about the opportunity to balance some of the form-based code information with traditional zoning, really identify where there might be gaps so that staff and the city could take an opportunity to either do some code updates in the future. And then of course, support any of that future growth that, that is coming to Bastrop. So this is just a recap on sort of where we've been for the last nine months, how we've interfaced. We're currently at this April, well, now we're in the May, May timeframe, but last week we met with the joint meeting and we had that open house. And then of course, your endorsement this evening will be for city council to take this and adopt this as the revised update. Couple of things I wanted to also highlight, we showed the existing land use. So this is the existing land use based on existing current uses today in 2024, 2025. And so this is just a demonstration of how the land is currently being used, whether it's residential or public or parkland or commercial retail. And this shows both the city limits and the ETJ. And this information is utilized to help inform the future land use map. Of course, you're familiar with this map. Mr. Cowie also referenced this map, your zoning place type map, which is also the permitted uses or current, how current properties are zoned right now. One of the things that we looked at through this planning process was some additional hazard constraints. So those flood, floodplown areas as well as the risk to wildfire. So really identifying where some of those hotspots may be and whether or not that would have an influence on a future land use map and where there could be some additional thought processes about how to mitigate some of these hazards. The three maps that I showed you before, as well as some other aggregated data related to land uses and what's changed between 2016 and today, helped to also build this, this growth potential map, which is essentially highlighting where we're seeing the opportunities for potential growth or where the emphasis for future growth could be and where the emphasis or the less emphasis would be on, in the city in terms of potential growth. It doesn't, this isn't a regulatory map or anything like that. This map is really just simply to demonstrate that based on a certain amount of criteria, wastewater availability, water availability, parcels or acres or parcels that are 10 acres or more that could be developed, whether or not they would qualify in a more high-growth opportunity area or low-growth opportunity area. And that map also gives us a sense of where we would place some of those categories for land use when we look at the future land use map. So overall, these are just some high-level recommendations that are included in the report, which is what we heard from the community, as you all are very familiar with, really making sure that there's the maintenance of that identity that is Bastrop. People love the small-town culture here. They want to continue to see that, to see that thrive. So that really said to us that there's a need for emphasis to promote those green spaces, historic assets, and to recommend that there are either design guidelines or overlay districts that can help safeguard portions of that character here in Bastrop. Align that growth that's happening with those community goals. So utilizing the future land use map and the plan to help guide how and when and where that growth occurs here in Bastrop. And then of course, prioritizing some of those land uses that can support that growth that, that is coming here, you know, with not just affordability, but access and quality of life. Direct development to strategic locations, again, really focusing on where's the growth coming and how can the city support that so that it doesn't have an impact on traffic? It doesn't have an impact or negative impacts on traffic, on water or other natural resources. And then of course, continuing with the 2016 plan is really to enhance that readiness for growth. So that was a very strong recommendation in the 2016 plan and that one carries over to this update as well, which is to continue to invest in infrastructure that can support that high-quality development here in the city. So at our 20, meeting on the 24th, you all worked on looking over this map and we had a really great and robust conversation. We took many of those comments and just summarized them here. Essentially, what we've heard is that there is a desire to add more neighborhood residential, which is the yellow component of the map, and then to clarify what residential mixed density means or what it, what can be permitted or not permitted in that. So you can see there's a sort of a number of bulleted items up there that express some of the concerns or things that needed to be sharpened up in the definition. Also to clarify in the downtown component of the land use category, that includes both the distinction between the residential and the commercial areas. And then finally there, there was also desire to see more of the mixed-use corridor commercial, which is the blue along other highways where you're seeing some of that potential development happening west of the river. And so, so this is now the updated map based on that feedback and that commentary that you all provided to us. So as you can see, I know it's kind of, can I zoom in on this over, over here? How do I do that? How do I zoom in?
Can you zoom a little bit, Rick?
Okay. If you can zoom in, so you can, you can stop right there. So we included an additional blue corridor or flex, I'm sorry, mixed-use commercial along the west of the river and north of 71. And then we also, if you can go zoom in a little closer to downtown.
Okay, maybe go to.
Oh, thank you. Ah, okay. I appreciate, okay. Yes. Hold on, let me make sure I do that right. There we go. Okay. So that was the first one that I mentioned. So we included that. And then there was a lot of discussion about some category here that we had, which was mixed, I'm sorry, residential mixed density. And so we've excluded that and returned that to single-family residential in this area here. And then of course, extended that flex commercial to support, to support any commercial, retail or mixed use along that, that corridor as well. So those are the two larger changes that were made. And then of course, in the downtown Bastrop, we've hatched out the commercial and then left the downtown residential separate from that in that area as well.
Is the southern boundary of that?
Shiloh? Is that Shiloh? Yeah. You can zoom back out.
So that's, is this successful or, other wasn't in the city limits?
Yeah, I think your, this is your city limit line here, where the top of my arrow is.
What's the line on the outside?
That is the.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, it extends out here, the other property that you were talking about. Yeah.
I can't, I can't.
It is mixed-use corridor. So, so you, that particular definition would include retail corridor. It wouldn't be as dense or sort of parking lot heavy, if you will, like it is along 71. I mean, you would still have that, shopping centers and things. You might think of it as like village type, but it would also have residential component in there.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions about the map?
There was some conversation about doing an overlay on downtown, for downtown. I don't totally understand what that means, but that was brought up.
Yeah. So there isn't an overlay. We've just hatched out a separate section under the downtown Bastrop, which includes primarily commercial. So I think there was some concern from you all about the residential component staying residential and then the commercial being able to sort of flourish along Chestnut and Maine, sort of your commercial district. And so we designated that with some guidance from staff about the street limits to show where the commercial development can occur and where the residential would stay.
So does that, and we've also talked in the past, and I'm sorry, I'm.
That's okay.
I'm not bright. We've also talked in the past about having the B three code basically remain downtown and, you know, kind of take away a lot of the B three code requirements and restrictions outside of downtown. Are we still, is that the plan we're still moving with?
So this update does not specifically call out specific code recommendations or updates. We do make recommendations about reevaluating components of the code in, in the report and in the recommendations. So that may be something that staff or you all would consider doing, moving forward. The, the recommendations, we did do a gap analysis to kind of look at some of the areas of the B three code that may not have aligned with the previous 2016 plan. And so from that gap analysis, when we make recommendations in the, in this update, we've referenced where you may consider under P four, more stringent overlays or in P five or.
Can you explain what an overlay is, just so I have an idea?
An overlay district would be just a, another layer of requirements that, that, that the community would have in your code.
Thank you. And I have one more question. I'm sorry. Can you explain the difference between form-based and place-based?
I think they are, I would qualify them as the same. It's just jargon, no.
What do we have now? We have.
Well, right now you have form-based.
Form-based, right.
So that basically says that the form, the form has to match whatever that use is.
And place-based means you designated commercial and anything goes?
No, it's, place, place is also very similar to form-based, but I.
Is form and use?
Oh, form and use, sure. Okay. So absolutely. Then, then I don't want to call them traditional, but the more, most cities don't have a form-based code. They have the use-based code. So it's basically what your use is. They siloed and categorized by a particular use, commercial, residential, park, industrial, all different uses. And some, some future land use maps have 20 different uses. You go to a large city, they have multitudes, multi-uses. But they are generally much larger character, you know, sort of categories than your, than your place or place type or your zoning, your zoning map. So a lot of times you'll have many zoning or place type characteristics within your, within a category of a future land use map. So they're supposed to fit into each of these broader categories.
Yeah, I think what Commissioner Parsons may be referring to specifically when she's trying to get to the downtown things is that has there been discussions with the city on ensuring that we're not reducing the B three guidelines with this new future land use map?
I don't, I don't think there, there, there is any reduction in, in that because it doesn't, yeah.
Sounds great. And then this might be for Doc. Is Alley Street considered Alley B? Is that considered a street in the city of Bastrop? Yes.
It's a public street. This is a smaller street.
It's a public street. What rights do the business owners have that are on that street? Because there has been some concern, you know, the other day I had people visit me during kind of like a little pop-up meeting. And then I've received texts over the last few days that are business owners that are concerned about what they can and cannot do.
We're off topic.
Sound good.
So I want to address, I want to be very clear, form and use, not form and type. Those are the same thing. Two, this is irrelevant to the B three code, completely irrelevant. The B three code is a building code, vertical.
Yeah.
No, because you're having conversations about shrinking it. This is about uses. The discussion is we have a form-based code, not a use-based code. And how do we make those things match? We're trying to fit a square peg into a round hole as best we can. The downtown remains purple because even in the past and even in the future, it has special characteristics. And yes, we're still moving toward an. And yes, we're still moving toward an overlay district in that area to protect it further. There has been discussion that the B-3 doesn't work in other areas of town, that it should only be in the historic district where it was before. Yes, absolutely, I would 1,000% march that way. That doesn't change the rest of this map at all in any way, shape, or form. This is really, because remember, form is just how things interact with one another. How does the parking look? How do the buildings look in relationship to the street, in relation to human? This is where can those things go? So.
So, so to explain, to re-explain, this has nothing to do with the coast. It only has to do with where we're going to put our.
Uses.
Commissioner Crouch?
I had one quick question. So all of the highway frontage is red or blue, with the exception of 21 East. And it's just red for a very short span. Why can't that be red all the way to the Y where the restaurant is on top of the hill? You've got that shown as residential all the way to the highway.
I'm trying to highlight it, but I can't.
I don't know.
Oh, it's the top one, sorry. This here?
Okay, so that's, so the Y, you see where it wise, where it wise right there at the state park, to the left of your hand, that little hand cursor that you have, to the left. Why, why isn't the side of the road red?
This one right here?
For, or blue? And why is it residential? You would never build a residential development right onto the highway like that. You have, you typically have some transitional from residential to commercial or residential to some type of retail along the side of a highway. Why couldn't we just make that red or blue like the rest of the highways?
Jimmy, are you talking about like the roadhouse?
Yes.
The roadhouse all the way to the.
Right. I mean, the roadhouse, the roadhouse isn't residential, and there's, there's a couple of businesses along the highway, they're not residential. Why would we show it residential now? Why wouldn't we just make it red or blue?
No, no issue. I think from staff's perspective, that's a very fast highway. We don't, I don't particularly care if it's red or blue. I think blue gives you more ability to have a mixed use if you're going to do some residential commercial area, because even though these are wide expanses, there's still people that live back there. And to, to address Commissioner Parsons' comment, the toad, no, we end up addressing the toad through building techniques. So, yeah, if this needs to be colored red, then, or blue, we can color that red.
Well, it just seems to make sense. If you're highway frontage and you're transitional to a residential area, why not make it red or blue and just make it a little easier to delineate between that? And if you have a transitional area, you have a transitional area. It's kind of typical along a highway. And every, every other artery that we have going out is red or blue along the highway.
It's true, we do have that old grocery store that's been vacant for however long. And, you know, just a couple hundred yards down is the garage or an auto shop, I believe.
And I do, I just, I feel remiss to keep, to not mention this again. We are the delivering body. You guys live here. We are new, right? We're new. Me three years, Doc two years, Ida, I don't know, five years maybe you've been trying to work with the city. But we move on, right? We all move on. You guys continue to live here. These are your recommendations. If there's a color you want to see on the doggone map, please tell me about the color you want to see on the doggone map. None of the three of us or any of the staff members that are here are going to die on this hill. Trust me when I tell you that. We're not dying on the hill.
Yeah. I just think that's a transition that's just typical. And if we could make it red or blue, it might make it easier to develop red or blue.
Let's just take that as a recommendation, please. Commissioners, do we have any other questions before we move on to citizen comments? Thank you very much.
Open the public hearing, please.
I'm going to open the public hearing for our 10th member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Ms. Heather Green, could you come forward, state your name and address, please?
Heather Green, 2007 Piccon Street. I just.
Welcome to the board.
I don't want to say I told you so, but you want to talk to all the people who want to talk about this? They're not here, they left, because it's not important to them until it's important to them. So I just, I want to say, let's move forward with it. But also, I know that we added that strip in on downtown to include residential, but I'm still concerned with the verbiage of mixed-use development in downtown when it comes specifically to those outer regions where we have always been just residential, specifically because right now in my backyard, we have that whole issue going on. And I want to make sure that in the event that that doesn't move forward, somebody doesn't buy it and try and put some type of business there with housing on top of it. So I just want to make sure that that, because that wording is still, from what I've seen in there, it still says that downtown allows for mixed use, which is why we were talking about the kind of overlay or just, I mean, I know that we have a form code, so they would have to get approval, but like she said, they won't always be here, but you guys also won't always be here. Hopefully, some of you move to different positions, you know, higher up potentially. But I just want to make sure that we're protecting, because it took us 10 years to get to this one. And so in 10 years, they might be visiting another one. But in those 10 years, I want to make sure that the people that live here don't have to come angrily, because we've, we're allowing something to happen because of what we have. I think that, I think that's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your time.
That is.
Please come forward.
So she brings up a very good point. So the purple in the downtown, which is, I think it used to be called neighborhood commercial, it used to be way, way, so, I don't know, whenever we deviated in Bastrop and became a little part of weird, now we're east of weird. In those downtown areas, you know, this whole thought that these, you know, pedestrian sheds are new, that this whole verbiage is new, it's not. Embedded in zoning codes for decades has been something that is traditionally called neighborhood commercial. And that is to allow the hairdresser, the nail salon, the accountant, the butcher, the candlestick maker, all of those things that work in cohesion with a neighborhood. What has taken shape, though, is we've sort of begun to veer off and grouped an entire residential area in the same as we're grouping what is Main Street, in the same as what we're grouping some of those streets that are clearly more than neighborhood commercial. So as we look at this overlay in the very near future, we need to make sure that those distinctions isn't just a bar, isn't just those things that aren't compatible to the neighborhoods. Now, I'll tell you, my uncle owned a neighborhood bar. He was, but he was at the corner, right? He was at an arterial, at a larger street. But there are some things in here that are not going to be compatible in a neighborhood. We need to make sure that we address that as we look at what is in the downtown code in the current use tables, in our current use tables, separate and apart from this map. But she brings up a very good point. When you're looking at what is compatible to, from one color to the next, it's not just, we're going to transition from multifamily to single-family. It is what's really allowed within that, and does that really make sense?
What this actually does is let you have places like Tracy's, let you have places like, there's a farm somewhere on Main Street, junky place over there where you can buy vegetables. This is allowed.
But, so think about that. Our forefathers, the Bastrop forefathers who planned it, thought enough about, I want to go to the farm stand, right? I want to go buy my meats. I want to go to Tracy's. I want to be able to get my, you know, my groceries, because we didn't have the larger grocery stores. Those are all neighborhood commercial things. They allow some, you know, what now we address pedestrian shed, it's, you know, the barber shop. I want to be able to walk there. My kid walks there on the way home. Today, some of those uses are completely different. You have barber shops who have, because of COVID and other things, right? Everybody wants to change their business model. And so you see DSW Shoes having wine bars now because there's certain things. Same thing, you see barber shops now having pool, having things that are going to attract men to stay there a little bit longer, spend a little bit more money. We just have to be careful what those uses are.
Before I close, citizen comments. Heather, would you like to?
I just forgot.
Thank you so much.
Heather Green, 2007 Piccon Street.
Thank you.
Just so you guys know, I was looking very, very closely on the slide. I don't know if that's what you, what you have was completely different, but it has the colors inverted. Downtown Bastrop is gray, industrial is purple, and that's in gray. So I just want to make sure we did that. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's just, just purple.
Commissioners, do we have any questions?
I read in this comprehensive plan that there's talk about a loop around Bastrop. Who will be responsible for building that loop?
Well, it's like everything else. Right, the city won't build it in individual. Part of it will be exactions through our master transportation plan. As plat comes in, they've got to build a portion of the road. Some of it is through grants that will apply through, through Tech dot or Campo or otherwise, which is again, why these plans are so important. And so one of the things, so we have a litany of parks that are coming online here very soon. The other component of transportation and loop is the hike and bike trail. How do you connect all of those things? And so that's one of the reasons I was at Parks Board next door, is we're making sure that those connections exist. The comp plan feeds all of the master plans. This is ground level, we got to get this right, and then things start to fall into place.
I'm just going to close the public hearing. Open it up for any final questions.
I just have one question. It might have nothing to do with this map. When we consider this map, Sylvia, do we consider any kind of fire buffer when we're talking about the potential for fires, when we talk about residential areas and things like that?
So that's the wooi map, the wildfire urban interface, right? Wooi, I said that right? Wildfire urban interface, that's always, that is something that I guess has been talked about for three years since I came here, they were already talking about it. We need to adopt that and incorporate that into the standards, absolutely. But in heavily wooded areas, like what you see in Tahitian, that's why you want to see some of those colors be lighter colors, so that you don't have the propensity. Yep.
Right. So, but up, I guess, so when we're talking about residential up above, is that the park? Is that the state park? I guess it is.
This is the state park.
That area up in there, that's, that residential that you've got up above the park.
It's a lot of residential there already.
Yeah, I know. So is, do we need to consider that, or it's already been taken into consideration? I don't need to think about it anymore, right?
So we do need to consider it, but between the fire codes and the building codes and the requirement to sprinkle some of that, yep.
Any final questions?
Can we make a motion or not for anything?
Yep.
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do. Would anyone like to make a motion?
No.
All right, here we go. I make a motion that we send this to council for approval as written.
Send what?
This presentation.
Comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive plan update as of May 2025.
Can you make it with a red or blue line on Highway 21?
I don't want to do that.
Would you accept Commissioner Crouch's amendment for the red or blue line adjacent to 21? There's video cameras behind us, too.
A mudgeon?
Come on, I'm going to get you some minutes for making me.
Yeah, you'll have to kill somebody down there. What, what we doing?
Are you going to, are you willing to take the amendment?
Would you?
Sure. Why not?
Commissioner Moss, would you clarify what you're making a motion for?
To recommend this to the city council for passage for the comprehensive plan update of May 2025, as written in these documents, and adding Jimmy's amendment to that.
And Jimmy's recommendation is? Commissioner Crouch?
Red or blue transitional on, along Highway 21, east of Highway 95 to, is it Loop 1? What is the state park?
150.
150?
Is that clear?
On the north side.
To the Y.
On the north side.
On the north side.
Yeah. Is that okay?
Sounds clear to me.
Clear as mud.
That's it.
Second.
We got a first and a second? Can we take a roll?
Yes, Christopher Tote.
Yes.
Jamie Crouch.
Yes.
Keith Alborn.
Yes.
Gary Moss.
Yep.
Jeffrey Estes.
Yes.
Patrice Parsons.
Yes.
And David Burrow.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's unanimous.
Forward adjournment to quick, a couple quick comments. So this is a recommendation that's going to go to city council, May 13th, and again on May 27th for a second reading. Part of the discussion was public engagement, so we, the best we can, we got maps out to different people, we have the QR codes on it. Thanks for getting out in the public with Councilman Foster. So again, at any time, you can come talk to city staff. We've got two ladies over here that are very beneficial in this process. So again, any discussion, any concerns of the public, reach out to us, please.
I do have a question.
Thank you very much for your time. And also Commissioner Parsons and Commissioner Scott, Chair Scott, did some pop-ups as well.
Yeah, I do have a question. Is it appropriate for some of us who would like to continue to do some public outreach and are willing to do it, is it appropriate for us to do that between now and the time the council meets? If it's not, I don't want to.
Yes, you can.
Thank you.
That is your way.
No.
Pardon?
It's open. It's public.
And the only comment I would make on that, the goal with staff, again, as Sylvia touched you, all the people living here, is that we're on the same page in saying this is what's adopted, education. And part of the education is know that we have open doors. I mean, Mr. Crouch was part of the process. You know, this stuff is an outsourcer. Everybody's internal now, we got plenty of staff, Sylvia. So we're all here to help the public. So the main thing is this is what the city's adopting. And if y'all have any questions, y'all do that, please get with us.
Well, I just would like to take this opportunity to thank the staff for everything they've done to try to get the word out and the great job you've been doing. I'd like to say that publicly. And to tell you all that I really appreciate how much you helped get maps together for me and all the stuff I needed to go do my own public outreach. I really, really appreciate it. You did a great job.
You did a great job. And this should have been about seven o'clock, so you've, an hour and 15 minutes later, we appreciate you staying with us.
So the PDF file that I sent, y'all are welcome to share that. That is public, the one with the QR codes. And then if y'all do need any maps, y'all can always let me know, I can print them out for you.
Thank you, Alondra. So James, did you have a second thing? No? No city updates or anything? Outstanding. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Yes, you can. I'll take that one.
I second.
Second.
Third.
Roll.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.